This is a great meeting of the board trustees of the Alabama Community College System. This call is over. I want to welcome all those in attendance and we appreciate you being here and appreciate your interest in the Community College System. We'll now have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Chancellor Heinrich, will you give the invocation?
Our gracious Father, we're so grateful for this day and an opportunity to operate your business. We're especially thankful for this board and the role that they play in this great state. We're thankful for our colleges and their leadership, but most of all, we're grateful for you from whom all good things come. We ask not that you would be with us as we do business, we ask these things in your name.
Stand and pledge allegiance.
Outfiting allegiance with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with everything and justice for all.
Here?
Here.
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 The Chancellor and the board members all have been provided with a copy of today's agenda earlier this week. Are there any comments or questions about the agenda? I now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Second, any further discussion about the agenda? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? unanimous, the agenda is approved. Okay, also each of you has been given a draft of the minutes of our May 27, 2015 meeting. It was relatively short and just initially an organizational meeting, pretty straightforward. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a motion or a second? Any discussion about the minutes, any corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Aye. unanimous. We're at section six, which is public comment. No public comment today. I'm not aware of any, Chancellor, you're not aware of any either, okay, very good. We're at section seven, which has item A1. This is the Chancellor's informant contract. This is our first order of business to consider this extension and renewal of the Chancellor's informant contract. We've all been provided a draft if the Chancellor proposed new contract. And you also have, in addition to that, a composite evaluation that was conducted under the guidance of the Governor's Office and by the Board of Education at the end of 2014. And as you can see from that composite, Chancellor Heinrich received excellent scores in all areas. The Chancellor's been consulted concerning this contract, he's in full support and agreement with the proposed contract. And this draft contract was also reviewed by the Governor's Office and he is in full support of this proposal. I would like to, in addition to comment, that Chancellor Heinrich has been most cooperative and very reasonable in working through this draft and this proposal and is looking forward to it in all respects. I'd also like to highlight just a few items that were contained, and I'll do a synopsis of some items that were contained in this contract. One, the contract term was modified to just over a two-year term from the three-year term of the previous contract. This two-year term, or a little over two-year term, will coincide with the traditional academic calendar. Number two, in recognition that our system and the employees and staff have not been able to receive a legislative pay increase for several years, eight to be exact, Dr. Heinrich decided to lead by example and has requested that he not be considered for any increase in his salary or benefits. In spite of the good job that Dr. Heinrich has done, leading the system for the last three years, he could have supported some salary adjustment. I want to thank Dr. Heinrich for being supportive of this and for his humility and his leadership in all respects of this and consideration of compensation. Three, in consultation with Dr. Heinrich, we added some job duties or evaluation items to assist this board in the future review of his job performance. These items are set forth in the actual agreement, but I also want to cover and just hit the high points. They include evaluation of the Chancellor's performance with respect to the following metrics. One, the Chancellor's embracement, promotion, and advancement of the vision and mission of the Alabama Community College System. Two, the Chancellor's efforts to secure the necessary capital, legislative appropriations, and other resources for proper management and operation of the Alabama Community College System. Three, the Chancellor's leadership and direction in building a culture of integrity and excellence in the Alabama Community College System. Four, the Chancellor's financial efficiency in managing the budget and appropriated funds in a manner to be a good, in all manner to be a good steward of the state and the Community College System's resource. Next, the Chancellor's efforts and intentions to work cooperatively with the board to develop and implement a physically responsible plan for the Alabama Community College System for a purpose of minimizing duplication and increasing the overall efficiency of the entire system. The Chancellor's efforts and intentions to work cooperatively with the board to implement the elements, the board approves strategic plans for the Alabama Community College System. I do believe that Dr. Heinrich appreciates the expectations of the board and I'm confident that he'll meet and exceed our desires with regard to these important objectives. Dr. Heinrich, do you have anything else you might add?
No, I certainly am in full agreement with everything that you said and just very grateful for all of the consideration.
Do you have a motion to approve this proposal? Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for the Chancellor, any discussion on this proposal on the renewal of the contract as I've stated? Chief Secretary, would you do a roll call vote on this, please?
Yes.
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 Aye.
unanimous, though, we have talked very much.
Yes, sir. Just a moment. I want to thank the board for your continued in moving the system forward. I can assure you that my commitment is never waning, never will wane, and I look forward to working with you as we move ahead. Saying that, I also want to say that any success that we've had thus far is certainly shared success. Sitting out in the, in the audience today, we have a number of key players, among those are our presidents, who have been absolutely central to the success of their colleges. They are, they are, they are on 24-7-365 literally. As a president, I used to get calls on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and it's their work in their colleges that are just, that I so much appreciate. And certainly my staff, my staff sitting among us as well have been absolutely fabulous and just so grateful and so grateful to them. You are going to have an opportunity to, to meet with presidents at lunch and get to know them a bit better, and there's going to be a future lunch where you can meet my staff and, and so on and later at that point, but I'm excited for you to do that. But I feel so thankful and grateful for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Chief Secretary. The chair for him. Applause. We're now to section eight, instructional and student services facilities, physical information, information technology of health education and workforce development. Chancellor Heinrich, I recommend that you, when you make a link through the action items.
Thank you, I appreciate that. What I'd like to do is take, take these items in, in groups, and I'd like to begin with the first six items. This will be item 8A1 through 6, and then I purposely clustered them this way, these first six items are similar in many ways in that they are programmatic in nature and they add significant value to the offerings of our colleges. And, and you know, and some people don't like the language I'm about to use, but as you know, we sell classes and programs, that's how we gain, how we gain revenue, that's our source of revenue. The most successful colleges in our system offer cutting-edge programs which lead to living wage jobs for our, for our citizens. Each of the proposals, each of these six proposals or recommendations have been fully vetted and are really very pure consideration. And, and certainly after, if we have a motion in a second, I'd be glad to address any questions that you might have. And Mr. Vice President, I would recommend the approval of 8A1 through 6.
Do we have a motion? These six items?
How much emotion does it take?
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Questions on items 1 through 6 for the Chancellor, any discussion on these items?
And we have some experts here as well who can address any questions, but maybe I can.
First one question, these items, after they're approved by this board, go on to A and then have to come back, or how does that, could you describe that a little more?
Approved by eight.
Eight's being, I mean, looking for eight on the front.
Any further questions, any discussions on items 1 through 6? Okay, we have a motion before us for items 1 through 6, and they are: Item 1, Bevel State Community College Associate and Applied Science Degree and Certificate Award in Instrumentation Technology Technician. Item 2, Bevel State Community College Associate and Applied Science Degree and Certificate Award in Industrial Mechanics and Maintenance Technology. Item 3, J.F. Drake State Community and Technical College Associate and Applied Science Degree and Certificate Award in Advanced Manufacturing Technology. Item 4, Foxer State Community College Associate and Applied Science Degree and Certificate Award in Industrial Mechanics and Maintenance Technology. Item 5, T.A. Lawson State Community College Associate and Applied Science Degree and Certificate Award in Radio and Television Broadcasting Technology Technician. Item 6, George Corley Wallace Community College Selma Associate and Applied Science Degree and Certificate Award in Health Information Technology. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? No. Question carries.
Yes, fine, so. The next item is 8A7. This is a, a pretty routine item, purchase of instructional administrative computer equipment at Gadsden State Community College. The action item in your folder explains it a bit further, that this is a regular rotation, regular replacement of some technology, and this is something that all of our colleges do on a regular basis. And so with that, I would recommend approval of item 8A7.
Is there a motion? Approved? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions on item 7? Okay, we have before us item 7, Gadsden State Community College, purchase of instructional administrative computer equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? No. Voting unanimous. Item 7 is approved.
Thank you. I'd like to take items 8 and 9 together, this is 8A, 8 and 9, two are directly related, and in my opinion, a great example of the kind of work that's going on in our, in our system. Let me give you just a kind of thumbnail sketch of what's happening here. Dr. Exley at State Community College, and Mr. Keith Brown at Jefferson State Community College have gotten together and are collaborating on a culinary arts program. Rather than duplicating what Jefferson State already has, Dr. Exley invited Mr. Brown to come in and bring what he already does very well at Jeff State and offer that culinary arts program at, at State. State's take part in this is to renovate a historic building on campus that will serve as a lab for this culinary arts program. So together, they're going to provide an opportunity for, for the students at State State that, that makes more sense. So I certainly recommend both the additional instructional site, which is what Jeff State is requesting, and the renovation project, which State is offering, realizing that these two work in concert with each other.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve items 8 and 9. There's been a motion and a second. Any questions for Chancellor Heinrich, staff concerning these items? Any further discussion?
Yeah, we have resource people here. Any other questions?
Is it your expectation that this relationship will go into the future for now?
Yes, yes, it is. I fully expect that this will be a permanent relationship between the two.
I just wanted to pick off that I'm very pleased to continue these types of relationships, they're just so valuable, such an opportunity to not duplicate services, but really be efficient with what we have.
Any further discussion, questions for the Chancellor's staff? If not, you have motion and second for you for items 8, 9. Eight is Jefferson State Community College additional instructional site, and item nine, State Community College renovation project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Aye. The motion carries. Motion carries. Unanimous.
Okay, item 8A10 is one that I believe all of you are very familiar with. This was the subject of a conference call toward the end of last week, and I think most of you were able to participate in that conference call, filled out some questions with Frank Barnes, Jay Leatherwood, and others. And at the end of each of those conference calls, I think you all felt like you had your, your questions answered. If you do have additional questions, those resource people, most of those resource people are here today. But with that, Mr. Vice President, I recommend approval of item 8A10.
Any regard to the conference call, I want to thank you for doing that, I know the rest of the boards appreciate of that, and I've heard from other board members that they'd like, you know, more of that in the future, and I know you're, I know you're open to that, that anything as we all learn together as board members about the system and about the different initiatives that we have coming before us. I'll now entertain a motion on item 10. Is there a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion or questions on item 8A10? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Move on to 8A11, another project that was a part of that, that conference call discussed recently. Again, I think you're very familiar with the details, certainly for Mr. President this year and other resource people are here, if you have additional questions. But with that, I would recommend approval for 8A.
I'll now entertain a motion for item 8A11.
Still waiting.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, okay, discussion, any questions on item 11? Any discussion? What do you have before you? We have a motion and second on item 11, Trenton State Technical College renovation project on Patterson campus. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye. I would like to take the next two items together, they are very similar, these are items 8A12 and 13. Wallace State Community College, Bishop State Community College, they're requesting permission to use additional funds to cover some cost overruns on some projects, not an unusual event. In each case, the college have, have the funds necessary to cover costs. Current policy requires board approval for cost overrun exceeding 10% of the original amount. And again, in, in both cases, the requests have been fully vetted and, and very justified. So, Mr. Vice President, I would recommend approval of items 12 and 13.
Mr. Davidson, are you still with us?
I am, I dropped off here in the alley and again.
That's okay, I thought, I thought I heard you.
Sorry about that.
I understand, just checking to make sure you're still with us, we'll proceed.
I am.
Okay. Okay, I'll now entertain a motion for approval of items 12 and 13, as explained by the Chancellor.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I recommend these two have to hit some conversations with the architects.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. Would you like to share any of that with us, Mr. Smith? I think it might be of interest to us.
We were on the, the issue with the truck driving of CDL courses, and this would be a comment to all the present. Of course layout has minimums but no maximums, so it might be wise to make sure when you go in to ask for grant money that you look down the future, see if you're going to have to add a vehicle, because there are certain sized courses that won't fit them, and that's based on the CDL manual exam. So don't bet yourself short, but do the right thing. Pay attention to that, again, your instructors have a CDL manual and it only specifies, so don't get caught in need to explain.
Thank you for your attention to detail on that, Mr. Smith, very appreciated. Any other discussion or questions about item 12 and 13? We have a motion and a second. Item 12, the truck driving range of Wallace State Community College Hensler. Item 13, Bishop State Community College additional authorization on a construction project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item 8A14, Shelton State Community College, this is official authorization. I've actually been very involved in this because of my previous position with Shelton State. They are requesting permission to expend $400,000 to further renovate and expand the respiratory therapy instructional site to accommodate more students. This is a, not only a very popular area, but one that's in great, a great name. Funds are available through federal Title III, and with that, Mr. Vice President, I recommend approval of item 8A14.
I'll now entertain a motion on item 14. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or any questions on item 14, Shelton State Community College additional authorization on the renovation project? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8A15, Southern Union State Community College, this is a roofing repair project, again, it has also been fully, fully vetted, it involves a number of their, a number of their, their buildings, and it's, it's a treaty corrective measure that dates back to 2007. They have the funds available to pay for this, and that's why, Mr. Vice President, I recommend approval of 8A15.
I'll entertain a motion to approve, approve item 15.
Motion.
Is there a second?
No.
There's been a motion and a second. Any questions for staff on this proposal or any questions for the Chancellor, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item, 16.
Item 16, this is a, was built in, another project that was discussed during last week's conference call. And then, I believe at that point, all of your questions were answered, and we have our experts here if there are any additional questions. With that, I recommend approval of 8A16.
I'll now entertain a motion for item 8A16.
Mr. President, I make motion to approve item 8A16.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion, any questions for the Chancellor or the staff? If there be no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Chancellor, we've been, we've, we've got it, we've approved item 8A number four, correct. We need to, we're supposed to help with what we do, so. Which is correct? Let's go back and revisit. This is item eight A, item four. There's one or two that had to that program. We want to make sure that it's went into, that it's, every, everyone received the correct action item. So when I read them aloud, I read it from an early draft. It left out a few words. So I'm going to read item eight A four again. Falcon State Community College, Associate Applied Science Degree and Certificate Award in three D Animation and Visual Effects. Computer Generated Imagery. And so it's basically, it's correct on your agenda, I just read it incorrectly. Do we need to re-bolt that? Do we need to go back through that officially? Should we go into it after? So we recommend approval of eight A four, as you said.
Should I entertain, I'm going to ask again, should I entertain a motion just on item four?
Yes.
Okay, would that be satisfactory? Okay, I'm going to read it again. I would like to entertain a motion on item eight A four. Falcon State Community College, Associate Applied Science Degree, Certificate Award in three D Animation and Visual Effects, Computer Generated Imagery. And that is the correct statement of the action item. Do I have a motion? There's a motion approved then, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion or any questions about what's taking place here? And I apologize for, I just had an old draft that I'm reading up, but that I made my notes on. Okay. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, that's vice staff. We're in section nine. Right, we're around to section nine, negatively on public information. And let's start with action item one. I know that the community college system, this has to do with our current bonds. Preston Bolt is here somewhere, I believe, and is going to, can you just give us a quick overview of what we need board to do?
There are slightly over forty issues of bonds that are outstanding that were issued by the State Board of Education. The Act that formed this board provides for the assumption by this board of those obligations and for an agreement between this board and State Board of Education with regard to how those bond issues are handled going forward. They will remain obligations of the State Board of Education, but they're payable out of revenue. They're now belong to this board and its colleges. So what we have paired is a resolution that first assumes those obligations as is provided in the Act. And second, that provides for an agreement that goes through several different items, including that if there are, that those bonds will be paid in accordance with their terms, that if there are any obligations that come up with respect to those bonds, for instance, if they were all done by the Internal Revenue Service, if there's an obligation of the Securities and Exchange Commission of the United States, any of those kinds of things, that all those bonds remain subject to at all times, this board and its staff will take care of those or its colleges will continue to take care of those and protect the State Board of Education with regard to those. There are a number of things that the State Board of Education has to do as the issuer of those bonds, including signing various items that have been submitted, the tax credits or the continued tax exemption. And it provides for their cooperation and this board's cooperation in making sure those things happen. So there are probably fourteen different things that are done in there. You can provide a copy of that in any country, summary of what the purpose of it is. I have it answering questions or go through with how much you wish.
Questions, Mr. Vogel.
Pauline, I can report to you that Mr. Vogel and I've had conversations about how best to present the State Board of Education. And I think we have a really good plan to do that. Mr. Vogel intends to come to the work session tomorrow of the State Board and present it. And then it will be voted on in July at our next board meeting. And so I feel like that's a, I feel like that will go through smoothly without any problems. So I'm confident about that.
And we have worked with that State Board's legal staff, Department of Education's legal staff, and make sure they're happy with it.
The chair will now entertain a motion to approve this proposal. All those in motion approved? Okay. Back in the alley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any further discussion or questions for the chancellor or chancellor staff? Mr. Vogel? And secretary, I want to ask for a roll call vote on this.
All right.
Jefferson Davis Community College has a lease agreement with Southern Health Education Center. This is a mutual beneficial agreement. It carries with it basically a one dollar annual cost towards, I mean, it's a simple renewal. I want to recommend approval of nine A, item two.
Is there a motion to approve item nine A two? Is everything? Is there a second? Any discussion? Any discussion, any questions for the chancellor or the staff? What do you have before you? Item nine A two, Jefferson Davis Community College lease agreement, Southern Alabama Area Health Education Center. All those in favor, let's see, I'll tell you what.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Oh, this is an annual contract. If there are any outfalls of the length of contract, I don't see explaining it here in the role book. David, are you aware of the specifics of things? Specifics about the process? I'll vote for that too. I'll make the motion.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Passes now. Nine A three is also a lease agreement. Jefferson State Community College. I think you're more aware of that, that our colleges either operate their own bookstore or they have a third party who operates bookstore. And if there is that third party, typically that bookstore leases space from the college. And this is, Jefferson State Community College is requesting permission to renew that lease with their bookstore, their in-house bookstore. And I think for that reason, I recommend approval of nine A three.
I will entertain a motion to approve item three.
Mr. Davis, I make a motion, approve.
Thank you.
Item three.
There's been a motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on item three? Any questions for the chancellor or staff? There being none, all those in favor of item three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item nine A four is an item that sets the next meeting date. Certainly may be some discussion. The recommended meeting date would be July fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at ten a.m. With lunch at twelve. And then we had planned our joint meeting with State Board of Education at one o'clock on that same day. Obviously, that's pending, we're approving. I would recommend approval of nine A four.
Chancellor, we've had some discussion. There's at least two of the board members have a significant conflict that's going to pull them out of the state. And I don't know, we just might consider, we could have our meeting, but I don't know, we might have our meeting later and then maybe the State Board could come back and meet in the work session. We did that because of the fourteenth being the State Board of Education was meeting. And then we could have a joint work session for the afternoon. But that's not, we end up losing, let's see, Mr. Smith, you and Mr. Conroy.
I value as possible. Yeah, Mr. Davis possibly.
Yeah, I have been, since I'm going to attend the meeting if possible. I know the basic volume from high school to high school, fourteen through sixteen.
Certainly, that's one of the things that's up to everyone. Would everyone be in agreement that we maybe just start looking at the calendar for July and reach a decision on our next board meeting in the next week or so? Is that, does anybody have any other suggestions? I'm open to it. Would it really be good to have one?
Does this have to be voted on? Does it have to be approved by the day it has to? And have to be voted on?
I have a suggestion about, I don't remember what your agenda item is with the joint sessions of the board, but I thought maybe it would be, instead of having so much a work session, maybe more of a social opportunity, instead of the personal being a working session, perhaps a, perhaps just a lunch together, it gets to know you, because I think it would be advantageous for the two boards to establish some rapport. Harder to really do it a lot of business. It's a suggestion. Well, our annual meeting is this July the fourteenth day. I thought perhaps we could do a lunch at a neutral location, not an apartment, not here, but maybe a neutral location where we have an opportunity to, I just think it'd be valuable to just build rapport and interact. You know, there are a lot of issues like dual enrollment and reduction of remediation and things that have mutual interest. And I just feel like jumping into a work session might be a bit, you know, that might be a bit abrupt, but just an opportunity to get to know one another might be a good way to just get started in a meaningful way.
What is the possibility of having this type of meeting the evening of July the first?
I think that would be, is that my word? Report building, seal type meeting, where we get to know one another and then...
Have dinner.
Yeah, have a dinner together.
Meeting on the fourteenth.
I don't know that we, maybe the first meeting is just strictly rapport building, not necessarily business. I offer that, and if you have something that you need to address in an agenda item, certainly I would want to answer to that, but...
And we'll have, we'll have some on this.
Certainly.
We're still looking at missing two possibly three board members like that. That's the look. So...
Well, the State Board meets monthly. We meet the second Thursday of every month. So there are a lot of opportunities to do that, sort of, um...
We may just have to look toward all of this.
Just like to make it a social event.
Yeah, we can discuss that later, but I, just to, just to get a consensus with the board on that. But to go ahead and set our July meeting, does everybody, has everybody kind of got a calendar out? Would it be better for the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of the week of like the seventh, eighth, and ninth, or would it be better for the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third for board? That gets it away from that man if that's your favor.
Okay, we'll do that.
I like Wednesday.
Okay, okay.
I like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday's better. I have a question.
All right. Ron, how are you looking for either the second or the third week of July?
Second week looks okay. The, the, listen, I'll look at it second week, the seventh day.
What, what if we, Mr. Vice Chair, what if we recommend the Wednesday, the twenty-second? And that way, if we have any feedback from the board meeting on the fourteenth? We'll discuss it at that time.
Okay, that's true. That's true. Is everybody good with July twenty-second? Make it eleven a.m. that morning or just ten a.m.? I talked with the, the cater board members and they drive the car, just that they were okay with the ten a.m.
I'll make that motion, we move it to July twenty-second.
Here in the boardroom. There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Okay. We have a motion for us to our next regular board meeting, the Wednesday, July twenty-second at ten a.m. here in the boardroom. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, very good, that's it.
The flag light under section nine involves the adoption of a seal for board trustees. This is all official documents. There is a graphic mock-up, it's the last item in your packet. You can see we use our logos and we can get it in there. And the college's support trustees. So I would recommend approval of nine A five.
Is there a motion to approve the seal? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments, questions from the chancellor's staff on this sealed extension proposed for our board? There being none, all those in favor approve this, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
That is approved. We're going to report, the chancellor will know by the time we're done.
I would just like to say, I haven't, I thank you for, meaning of the individuals, and thank you for selecting me to be your presiding officer when Governor Biffy is not here. I consider it to be some different responsibility. And I want to let you know, you can call me at any time. Uh, send me emails, communicate with me, I welcome that. If you have criticism, comments, suggestions, I'm open to. Because this is about our board, it's not about me or about a pro team. I think you made an excellent choice, selecting Mr. Davis as the pro team. And I'm excited about what this board has ahead of it, what we can accomplish. I feel like we all know the importance of the citizens of Alabama. We certainly were chosen by the governor and confirmed by the senate, and I'm appreciative of that. But ultimately, we're responsible to the citizens of Alabama, and I think each of us feels that way. And we wanna be good stewards for their resources. But, uh, just let, just to let everybody know, uh, that I welcome your input. I, I, I urge you to, to give me input, I urge you to be involved and engaged because this isn't about any one of us on this board, it's, it's the board's. And I look forward to getting to know each, every, everyone in the days and months ahead. That's all I have, Chancellor.
What, what I'd like to do now during the few moments I have, have left, is I'd like to, to, uh, begin the orientation process and touch on a couple of key points. Uh, I, I guess I, I would direct you, I believe that, um, on the left-hand side of your packet, um, the, the inside cover, we have a list of the orientation activities we intend to address, uh, over the course of the next several months. We may have to alter that, uh, alter that slightly, but, uh, we, we recognize that, that what, what we do and what we offer is almost a foreign language. And, but there's an awful lot that, uh, that, that you have to learn and that we want you to know, uh, as, as your, our representatives. And, uh, and so what I'd like to do today is, is, is begin with a general overview. We have, uh, have also prepared for you a, a president's directory and contact information with each president's picture. I'll be referring to that in just a moment. We have a, uh, a, a, a fact booklet that, uh, that methodically goes through each one of our, our colleges and tells you some of the pertinent facts associated with, uh, with that college. Uh, and I'm gonna be referring to that in just a moment. Uh, and we have our annual report from two thousand fourteen that I'll be touching briefly on. But what I'd like to start with is a, a, uh, just a very brief PowerPoint overview. And this is certainly of the fifty thousand view, uh, perspective. And, and just give you a, give you a, a kind of snapshot of who we are and, uh, and a couple of struggles with which we're facing. And, and, and I think it goes without saying that the people of, of our state expect and deserve a community college system that's managed efficiently and effectively. And I strongly believe that that's what they're receiving today. And I think, uh, I, as you heard me say before, I'm personally committed to delivering sound management and, and, uh, and, and be looking forward to serving the citizens of our state. I'm not gonna burden you with a long PowerPoint, but I would like to touch on a couple of, uh, key areas. So I have a few slides to emphasize some key points, and we can go to slide number one or slide number two, please. This is a snapshot of, of the community college system. We are a huge enterprise. I think people underestimate our size and, uh, and our reach. We're made up of twenty-six institutions delivering instruction, uh, at a hundred and forty-eight sites. Uh, and the sites includes college college campuses, of course, uh, satellite instructional sites, prison education sites, high schools where we offer dual enrollment. Uh, we serve nearly two hundred and fifty thousand Alabamians each year. That's substantial by anybody's measure. Our system employs ninety-five hundred faculty, staff and administrators, and our yearly budget exceeds one billion dollars. Uh, our colleges are an educational economic force, literally, that touches every corner of, of our state. And, and, and we feel the impact we have in the future is absolutely essential to the economic well-being of our great state. Uh, we, we, we also believe that the, uh, the community college system is positioned to address some of the state's most difficult challenges with, with adequate funding. Uh, in, in a state with, uh, with a population of about four point eight million dollars, uh, around four hundred and seventy thousand working age adults do not have their high school diploma. These citizens must be provided with an opportunity to propel them forward. And in fact, they can receive that through the community college system. So in, in, indeed, we have, and this is gonna sound negative that I, I wanted to, to appear, but we have a leaky educational pipeline when you take a look at, uh, pre-K all the way through PhD. And, uh, certainly, in my, my next slide, if we go to my next slide, it's, it's, it's enlightening and it's disturbing. Can't see it, it's too small. Uh, so we describe for you what's, uh, what's on that slide. This comes from the State of the South report by MDC. MDC is well-known for their, for their work. And, uh, it, it is an economic and community development nonprofit in North Carolina. But it clearly shows serious educational issues which we're, we're all discussing. And these issues will face this board and the community college system, uh, moving forward. Here, here, here's what it says. For every one hundred ninth graders, thirty-eight percent don't graduate from high school on time. Another twenty-two percent graduate but do not directly go on to college. Thirteen percent go to college but don't make it to the second year. Ultimately, only fifteen of one hundred graduate with a college degree within six years. And you know, that's dramatic, it's sobering, and that must change, and it is changing. Uh, the community colleges can't fix the entire pipeline, but our colleges can plug some of the major leaks in the, in the middle, the middle skills, uh, middle skills area. Uh, you know, in, in an econ- and this is why it's so important, in an economy that increasingly requires some education beyond high school for its jobs, uh, if we're going to sustain the middle class, we must get people into post-secondary education. And we must address this issue. And we are aggressively, uh, addressing this fact. Mary Scott, one of the issues that I'd like to address at some point in one of our joint meetings is the remediation issue. Because I think working together, we're, we're making some progress, but we've got a long ways to go. So, um, uh, in, 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 in any event, uh, that's...
These graduation numbers are, maybe just a little bit, that number is actually just a little higher now than it was at the swi- at the time we were forming.
We are definitely heading in the right direction. And I think we're heading in the right direction because we are working together. And I think that's, that's, that's critical. So, uh, but any, but we have to be ever vigilant, uh, on this, uh, on this particular point. So, uh, uh, so, so as a way to, in a snapshot, as a way to define a, a vision for progress, what I'd like to do, and we'll talk more about this in the months ahead, I, I'd like to talk to you about three functions, three skills and four goals associated with, uh, with the system. If we could go to, uh, thank you, to slide five. Uh, to, to, to use a, kind of very, probably old but descriptive cliche, community colleges have a symbiotic, three-part core mission. And this mission is akin to three essential or key pillars holding up a grand old building. Uh, all of them are absolutely essential. And each of these pillars, if not tended to, will create a problem to the other, the other two. And you can see, and I'll talk about each of these briefly, academic transfer, workforce, force, force development, and adult education, they are central to what we do. This is what we do best. So one pillar, academic transfer. Our colleges provide young people with an early and a much less expensive start to higher education. And they prepare them to transfer to a four-year university. Without this cost-effective option, in my opinion, our state would be much poorer. And, uh, and I would also say, many, many more individuals would never make it into the ranks of, of the college educated. So I might quickly add that, uh, that with a sense of pride, and I would, I would encourage you to hear this if you don't already know this, our students, those students who finish at one of our community colleges and transfer onto a four-year institution, they complete their four-year degrees at a higher rate than that university's neighbor's students. So something good is happening in our community colleges. And I think we understand what that is. I think we have a very high-touch, very conscientious approach to the way we deliver education. Uh, and, and I might say, this last statistic that I just, uh, that I just quoted, that doesn't come from us. That comes from the four-year institution. So this is pretty, uh, pretty objective. So that's color one. Pillar two is adult education. Uh, our colleges provide, what I guess I would describe more mature citizens with an opportunity to come back to school, to acquire new or upgraded skills, and maybe most importantly, prepare for the GED and improve their lives, ultimately improving their position in the labor market. And frankly, this is a passion of mine for a lot of recent, so I, the adult ed program is critical because I feel that four hundred and seventy thousand working age adults without high school credentials, we need to figure out a way, and need greater numbers to get them into our workforce. And in order to do that, they have to pass through our adult ed programs or at least achieve their, uh, their GED. Uh, our adult ed programs are free, there is no cost. This is something that is valued that highly. Uh, but there are issues we'll talk to you about, about getting adults into those programs. Uh, issues such as pride that keeps people away. It's very difficult to admit that I don't have my high school credential. And so there are things we are doing, our adult ed program's working very hard on that. But, uh, but you will become a, be, become a major player in helping us with, uh, with that. I, I, this is sort of, I guess, a point of personal privilege. I often ask why in two thousand eight, I gave up a tenure position in some key administrative responsibilities in a four-year university to come to be a president at one of our community colleges? And, and frankly, the answer was simple then and it's simple now. In, in my opinion, key aspects of traditional higher education in the United States are broken. And I'm very concerned about, I'm very concerned about that. They're broken in the higher education, in my opinion, leaves a tremendous amount of, uh, human talent and human capital on the table because of unwritten admission requirements and financial policies that in my opinion are killers. Uh, and it's unacceptable. The community college system throw their door, their doors open wide for all who desire a better state in life. Uh, and adult education is just one example of how community colleges effectively meet the needs of Alabama's citizens. Uh, and, and again, in my humble opinion, of course, I'm gonna say this, we are the answer to most of the woes that we now, we now face. So I'll get off my soapbox for now, I'll get back on it in the future, but for now. Uh, the third pillar, uh, is workforce development. Uh, our colleges are linchpins in Alabama's strategy to attract new, retain existing and support expanding business and industry. Uh, our faculty educates and trains people for the kinds of modern living jobs that the governor speaks about all the time and certainly that the, the legislature seeks to bring to our great state. We form, if, if, this is, this is such an important point, and we'll hear a whole lot more about it in the future. Uh, between K-12 and the two-year system, we found a, we form a foundation for all workforce development. The training programs, the many, many training programs that are, that are out there will not exist if you don't have a strong K-12 or two-year system. They have nothing to work with. And so workforce development is central and key to what we, uh, what we do. And I'm, I'm gonna be excited to talk with you about some of the, uh, some of the unique things that are occurring in our state right now with reference to the partnership we have with K-12, how we're working with business industry, with business and industry. Uh, a new academy model that was just launched in Calhoun County that I think you'll see spread across the state. Our earn and learn partnerships with business industry, there are lots of good things happening, we need to expand those. And so I, I look forward to working with you, uh, you on that. But a strong comprehensive community college system is critical to fulfilling these three, uh, three pillars. And again, not every college needs to do all three equally. But the state as a whole needs a comprehensive system funded adequately for Alabama to match or exceed, frankly, the potency of Mississippi and Tennessee and Georgia. They're our competitors right now, and they're coming after us. Uh, Tennessee has passed some legislation that will revolutionize the way they do community college. They've eliminated tuition for all type of courses. Uh, business and industry is taking note, and that's something we're gonna, gonna have to, uh, to address. And I know that, I've appreciated Mary Scott's passion for that, uh, in the past, and, and, and we will certainly, uh, be talking more about that, uh, that in the future. Uh, let's turn now, quickly turn, uh, for a moment to the three sets of skills that I see as particularly crucial for our colleges to spread more widely across Alabama. The, uh, if we go to the next, thank you. The, the first is, in, in middle skills. Uh, there is no question, I know it's difficult to see this, there's no question that Alabama needs engineers and other high-skill workers. Period. However, and please hear this number, six to seven out of ten openings in our state now fall into the middle skill category. Nurses, physical therapists, welders, machinists, industrial manufacturing specialists, truck drivers, on and on and on. Six to seven out of ten openings fall in this category. And you've no doubt heard about the hollowing out of the middle class. Community colleges are key to rebuilding the hard-working and highly productive middle class. That falls on us. And, uh, and we have some work to do, but, uh, we're making progress, and I feel confident with this board, we'll continue to make, uh, make progress. If you go to the next, uh, the next few slides, please. Uh, the, 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 the second skill that's so critically important, in fact, one more if you would. Uh, go back, sorry. The second skill that's so very important are what we refer to as soft skills or work-ready skills. Uh, and, when, when I'm out talking to business and industry, these are emphasized all the time. No question that Alabama needs well-educated people who possess highly technical skills, uh, skills of operating complex machinery. In the high-tech world we not find ourselves, we find ourselves. However, business and industry now insists on workers with good interpersonal skills, uh, with those who actually show up for work and show up for work on time, those who collaborate smoothly, smoothly in teams, those who have basic problem-solving skills, those who communicate well, to me, there's a few. And, and, and I want you to know that our colleges are intensifying their efforts to instill these critical soft skills into all of our students. Uh, it, it is somewhat of an uphill climb because it's a problem. It's a problem in our state, but it's a problem in, uh, nationally as well. Uh, but, uh, there's, there's, there's no question that we have heard the call to action and we are working very hard to address those soft skills. Uh, the, the third skill, and, and you can keep it on that, that slide, is financial literacy skills. And, and this is something that our colleges have addressed in a variety of ways for many, many years. We just haven't heard about it. But we are re-upping our efforts and we're gonna focus more directly on those. Our colleges need to help families understand banking and credit and insurance and housing, I, and, and, and know how to, to manage their earnings, know how to save for the future, know how to save for retirement. You know, in a state, this is gonna sound critical, but in a state that has four times as many payday loan operations as McDonald's fast food restaurants, financial literacy is more important now than ever. And we feel that that's part of our responsibility, we're acting on that responsibility. Uh, and again, Alabama's economic health requires a strong system, but one that will help drive its citizens forward in the, uh, in the workplace. Uh, the Southern Regional Education Board recently released a report on the roles of community colleges. And I'd like to quote something from that report, that I think is critically important. SREV stated that, and I quote, "Community colleges are essential to achieving state goals for increasing educational achievement of the population, for increasing access and completion, for eliminating achievement gaps, for closing opportunity gaps, and for addressing workforce and economic development objectives." Unquote. Yeah, and, and, and again, this is something that we'll talk about in the future, but I think this further emphasizes the important role that community colleges, uh, play in the future of our, of our great state and of our nature. The Alabama community college system, uh, has adopted four priorities that address these goals and thereby will be a part of the, the process moving the state forward. And I'd like to talk about those, uh, quickly. Again, we're, we're very much at the front end of this, we're not gonna move too quickly because you, you will be very involved in, in, in the approval process. But priority one, uh, is to designate centers of excellence. Uh, and, and again, if you take a look at our state and look at how it's grown in, uh, in, in a number of areas, specifically the auto industry and aviation, allied health, hospitality, construction and manufacturing, you see that much of our future is housed in those, in those areas. Working with business and industry, our system can develop hubs of expertise and innovation in each of these incredible growth areas. And, uh, again, working together, we will, uh, we will accomplish that. That's priority one. Priority two, our colleges must maintain this wide-open doors policy and a relatively low tuition and fee rate. Uh, and I'm concerned about that right now, very concerned about that. You know, access and affordability are crucial in that the vast majority of our students are citizens of our state. Ninety-one percent of those who are enrolled in our community colleges are Alabama citizens. And we're very proud of that, and we export very little, uh, higher education. These individuals typically choose to live and work in Alabama after they complete their education or training. Regrettably, because of years of funding cuts to the system, our tuition is no longer... Regrettably, because of years of funding cuts to the system, our tuition is no longer competitive, in my opinion. This fact is going to lead, and is leading to, to rather serious consequences, if not rectifying. And so we'll be working with you as a board to come up with creative and innovative ways to address this fact. Priority three, our colleges must do more than simply make it easy for our students to enter. Our doors are wide open, however, it must do more. Colleges must also equip themselves to propel students to complete the courses for a work-ready credential, college transfer, or associate's degree. They must complete a marketable skill. And when we're successful at that, our state will be much more successful as well. Priority four, and let me put this bluntly, as if I've not been blunt thus far. We need colleges with strong faculty to produce successful students. You know, today, in today's marketplace, the skilled faculty that we must have and must be present is more distant than it ever has been. It has become incredibly difficult for the community college system to maintain its faculty, particularly in specific technical areas. We are no longer competing favorably with K-12. K-12 can outbid us across the board. They typically start faculty at about $4,300 more a year than we can pay. And business and industry are gobbling up our best faculty on a regular basis, often paying $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 more a year than we're able to pay. We, on a monthly basis, we are losing our very best and brightest faculty, and it's a serious concern for me in our system moving forward. And again, I can't blame these individuals for seeking out better opportunities for themselves and their families, but we must correct this serious problem. It's a compensation problem, and it's something that I want to work with the board very quickly on to rectify, and we, in fact, can rectify it, working together. We just cannot lose any more talent. So in any event, we'll be talking more about that in the future. We also face critical needs to fill presidencies at our colleges with skillful leaders. Leaders who are good managers, for sure, but also are high-performing women and men with strategic visions, who develop partnerships, who don't fear change, and who are deeply committed to student success. And again, working together, we will address that charge. So again, in any, it is truly an honor and a privilege for me to serve in this particular role. I am so grateful that each and every one of you have committed to join arms and join hands with us to make this system its very, very best. And I have no doubt that we will achieve that goal. And as I said earlier, I pledge my support to you in this system moving forward. And at the very end, we like to refer to the fact that our colleges are the communities' colleges, and we take that very seriously. So again, I appreciate your attention on this quick overview. Let me direct you to a couple of other items that you have in front of you. I'm not going to spend much time on this, but...
Chancellor, I'd interrupt to give you a quick personal order.
Please, sure.
Could you possibly email a solid report?
Glad to, we'll email all of that information to you. As a matter of fact, you have a lot of that in front of you right now, but I'll give you a PowerPoint as well. The documents, the first document on the list that says president's directory and contact information. This is, as I affectionately call, kind of a cheat sheet for you as you're getting to know all of our presidents, and it's particularly important that you get to know all of them. We want that. These are our leaders, these are what they can happen day in and day out. And you'll see their pictures and just kind of a snapshot of who they are and where they're from. You're going to have lunch with them today, but what I would like to do is ask them to stand for just a moment and be recognized. So if you're a president, or you're a president of one of our institutions, or an executive director, if you would stand for just a moment. So again, we're going to give you more time with them than you see right now, but this is the leadership of our system. And I look forward to... The second document is a much larger document. It's an orientation manual and fact book. It is bound, it has information about the system, it has information on every one of our colleges. There's more information in this little booklet that you'll be able to digest in a week or two, but we hope through the months as we go through this orientation that it will help you get to know us, and that this is something that you'll be able to refer to often. And Janet Martin and Calhoun State have played a critical role in this, C.J. Cooper from our system played a critical role in this. There are many others who have invested lots of hours in providing this for you. It is not perfect, hear that. Like any document, it's a work in progress. We will have a second printing soon where we correct some of the issues that we've already identified. But just know that we will continually keep this up to date for you, so you have an ongoing resource about the system. The final document, and this is one that I think several of you already have, this is last year's annual report about the system 2014. And again, I think it's a good snapshot of what we've done. I don't want to take a lot of time to page through this, but there are a couple of things that we're especially proud of. We have highlighted a number of students at a number of colleges and programs, and you can read about their successes, about their wishes, about their hopes. This is just a snapshot of literally thousands of students that we touch each year. And these are the kinds of stories that'll bring tears to your eyes, and the impact that our programs have on their lives and their families forever. And so I hope that you enjoy looking through that. There is also some information about the system in general, but there's a financial highlight at the end that will give you a snapshot of our finances. There's also information at the very back of this document that addresses that as well. So in any event, we are, as I said, constantly updating these things, but we want to, providing this information now to begin the orientation process. So again, as I said, we will have additional versions of this as we make corrections. Again, I would end where I began. There is an orientation roadmap that I've referred you to each time we meet. We'll be spending a bit of our time addressing that. The next topic that we're going to address is going to involve the finances of the system. We want to walk you through that, that's very involved. And so in addition to the information we've given you here today, we're going to take you through a much more involved orientation to the finances at both the system level, and we're also going to have a college or two who will come and report to you, so you get a feel for how we deal with finances, both here and at the college level. So, we need to look at it, which is...
Chancellor, I appreciated your comments, especially about the difficulty and the competition that you face with K-12, K-12, private sector. Is there anything that you, any initiatives you want to start with?
I would like very much, and I appreciate that opportunity. This board is in a position to make the changes we need to correct some of the salaries equities. And what I'd like to do with this with the board is undertake pretty quickly a compensation study, bring a series of recommendations back to the board for your consideration, and then hopefully we can address these issues just as quickly as reasonable. So that's what I would propose.
I personally would like to see you do that, and like to see the results of it.
I don't, do we need to vote on that? I don't think we need to vote on that, but what I'll do is when I bring back our recommendations, and then that...
That would be good. And maybe in the interim, you might want to send an email to all the board members, just telling them basically what you're going to do.
Absolutely.
Because we'll have something in front of them, and if they don't understand everything, then we'll just wait until...
We'll keep you up to date along the way as well, so I'd say you'd like to watch the board. Thank you.
There, I'm on air. Chancellor, I appreciate you giving the information out to us, and I know your staff did, I feel like...
I guess I'm very sad.
I appreciate you giving it to us, and that's time until we can ask questions and have time to study it. So I can appreciate it.
Any comments for the board members, if you have any comments? We've already, we've set our next regular meeting for Wednesday, July 42nd at 10:00 a.m. here in Port Huron. I have one more question, I'll be in charge of that.
That's what I'm going to do, so thank you, I appreciate that. We'll get that lunch for you, sir, from the first floor. We're going to give you up tables. The presidents will then join you at the table, just in an effort to formally get to know you. We're also going to spend just a moment or two to have, to then introduce themselves briefly. And I think that'll help do a lot of things for the college, so once we adjourn, we'll get to the first floor and the president's house.
There being no further business before the board, stop me if I'm wrong. There's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Hold on, in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You standing?